Just hop on and.
I'd like to call this meeting in Monticello City Council to order, would you please rise? And join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing as Rodney leads us in prayer to see. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which stands one nation under the law. Justice for all.
So once again, Father, thank you for bringing us together safely. We pray for those that who are not with us and for whatever reason, unless you're to be with them, is there a way? We ask you to give us wisdom and clear thinking as we make decisions this evening. We love you and praise your name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Here.
Ms. Stevens? Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed? Ms. Vogt? Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public participation. Anyone in house tonight? Public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comments to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. You have anyone more?
I do.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report claims dated April 26, 2022 through May 9, 2022. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, April 25, 2022. Permit report, April 2022. Police report, April 2022. Treasurer's report, March 2022. And fire report, April 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Subdued. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. At this time, I would like to make the following proclamation. National Police Week 2022. Whereas National Police Week is to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risks and dangers in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all our people. And whereas by a joint resolution approved October 1, 1962, the Congress has requested the President to designate May 15 of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week during which May 15 occurs as Police Week. Excuse me. And whereas the members of the city of Monticello Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Monticello City Council here breath claims May 15 through 21st, 2022 is Police Week in the city of Monticello. Be it further resolved that the Monticello City Council publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation and encourages all citizens to express appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to our safety and security. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Monticello to be affixed on this ninth day of May, 2022. John, all our sincerest appreciation for the wonderful work police department does in this community. I think maybe you could all give a hand. Continuing my report now. New businesses in the community. Stiefel is now open for coffee and breakfast treats Wednesdays through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Stop in and welcome Sarah and Steve Henry to downtown. Also welcome to Three Ravens Two Square Event Coffee Space on the west side of the square. Some upcoming events. The annual trade show for the Sanglin Valley CEO is this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the Kirby Medical Center Community Outreach Room. The kids spoke to Rotary this past week and I think it would be well worth your time to go up and see what they've been up to this year. It's not a very big group, but man, they've got it by the tail. I was really impressed with what they've accomplished. So it's free. You don't have to pay and it would be well worth your effort to stop in and see them. It's on Thursday. There are a lot of upcoming and new events at Allerton Park, Puyatt County Trail Blazers, Eli Field, and the Monticello Railway Museum. Make sure you visit the Make It Monticello Facebook page for a listing. And I need to remind council members, and I bet it's not on here, of course not. Strategic planning. Callie Jo has sent out a couple of times, a couple of emails encouraging you to check the schedule that she's put down tentatively for all of you to participate. They were going to interview all of us. And so if you have not taken care of that, would you do that, please? She sent, I don't know, it was the last one she sent yesterday or today?
She sent a follow-up today.
Okay. So if you haven't checked your city email account, you should. Occasionally, there's something really important on there. Okay? So take care of that. Okay. New business items. Mayoral appointments. I would like to appoint the following with your advice and consent. Finding and zoning board. Michael Beam, five-year term expires April 2027. Chad Johnson, five-year term expires April 2027. Historic Preservation Commission. Maynard Suri, Catty Hudson, Brian Tracy. Three-year term expires April 2025. Treasurer, Chris Schroder, Kelly's Accounting. Police Pension Board. Craig Griswold, Lieutenant Terry Jones, Chris Schroder, Gil Yucka, Brian Fulton, and T.R. Brown. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any comments or questions about my appointees? Just for your information, Chad Johnson has served on the Historic Preservation Commission for at least three years and had asked some time ago to be, there ever was an opening that he would like to have. So he is replacing Harold Day, who's put in a lot of years of service, but thought it was probably time to step down. So appreciate all that he's done. So I have a motion and a second. Can I have a?
Ready for roll call. And I'll note that Tom Reed joins.
Oh, did he?
On the meeting now remotely.
Being quiet.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2022-16, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Terry, Jim, Terry, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This Resolution 2022-16 is a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. In short, it's asking the state for our MFT money so we can execute our oil station. So this resolution officially requests I have to reprove more fuel tax funds in a specified amount of $75,000 for our oil and chip program. City Council's budget, $75,000 under the fine item 05-55173. It's recommended that the city council discuss and approve this Resolution 2022 as presented.
Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-16, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code? Subdued. Is there a second?
Second.
Last chance. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have a little fun.
Now I know why they're up there. All right. Ordinance 2022-17 and ordinance amending Chapter 35 of the city of Monticello Code of Ordinances, amending the hiring standards for part-time officers. Chief Carter?
Yes. Chapter 35 of the municipal code has to do with a lot about the structure of the police department, 35.42, specifically for part-time, hiring part-time officers. And I've been approached by some individuals who are, who have had current, are still current with their police certification. They were working at some larger agencies and they did not like the feel of communities in those areas and have left to go on to other business in the private sector. But they still want to continue with their police work and doing that in communities that appreciate law enforcement. They don't have three years of experience. There's one that has one, one that has two. And so what we're looking for tonight is to bring that down. So, you know, because they didn't ask, are we hiring officers part-time? Yes, I've got a couple of officers, one that has some heart issues, he's going to be leaving soon, and another one that he says he's just getting to go for it. I thought 50 was pretty young. But so what we're asking tonight is to reduce the years of experience from three years as a requirement to one. And it's recommended that the council discuss and approve ordinance 22-17, 2022-17, amending the hiring standards for part-time officers, Chapter 35 of the city code of ordinances as presented. And again, that does nothing else, so they still have background checks, all that stuff. It just.
Nothing changes except the number of years. Any comments or questions?
When you bring part-time into Santa, do they still go under an FTO for your department?
They will have an FTO for our department because we do, like our reporting is different than other agencies, reports and stuff like that. It's not as long.
Right.
Because they've already been doing the police work. When they come out of the academy, it's all ready to go.
Yeah.
I guess they must still have an FTO.
Anyone else?
Is that a standard that you would continue to monitor just to make sure that?
Oh, yeah.
We take your recommendation on something like that, but if at some point in the future we need to adjust it, we can do that down the line.
Nice thing with, I say nice things, it's not probably not nice for them, but the part-timers, if something's not working out, we can just get rid of it.
Right.
Have the money. There's not any, they're not in the union, anything like that, so.
Anyone else? Good questions. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-17 and ordinance amending Chapter 35 of the city of Monticello Code of Ordinances, amending the hiring standards for part-time officers?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we proceed? Hearing your singing, I'm going to have a roll call.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Allerton Public Library District Transfer of Property to the city of Monticello Discussion Only. Mr. Summers?
Good to be here, Mayor. Like I indicated a couple of council meetings ago, I would bring this forward discussion in council. If you recall, last year, the Allerton Public Library District verbalized the possibility of transferring roughly four acres to the city of Monticello for development over on Park. That four acres would provide a possible second direct access to Old Rockaway 47. So staff started discussions with the Allerton Public Library District. And in those discussions, the library indicated that they would be willing to give about one additional acre along the south side of their property towards the development of Park. Staff has been speaking with the attorneys about the property transfer. The attorneys have drafted their recommendation for proceeding with property transfer and intergovernmental agreement for said transfer. It's included in the packet, a preliminary exhibit that shows a dash dot line that's about 105 feet west of the west building face, about 30 feet south of their cellar most parking area. So this was drafted by the attorneys, I think would be a multi-phased approach where the city council. The city would have their first discussion on the documents that will, some of the documents that will eventually come back to you for final approval. The next step would to provide these documents to the current state, the Allerton Public Library Board, and their attorney to review and bring back the possible revisions or amendments, whatever they might decide to do on their end. Then I would bring those amendments or revisions back to the city council and indicate what revisions were to be made. And then it would be the city council's decision to approve the ordinance along with that intergovernmental agreement. And then our attorneys drafted a resolution that would be presented to Allerton Public Library Board for their consideration. So I'm going to start with council. Get your thoughts on this document or these documents, any concerns you might have. Then I'll ship it to the library and when I receive those back from the library, I'll present it back to the person for the ordinance and intergovernment. Then I'll go back to the library for their blessing of the resolution. If you recall, the council indicated that they liked the property transfer. The council indicated that it would be at the cost of the city of Monticello. So we do have obviously attorney fees with these documents. I did get a proposal for the professional land surveyors to do the boundary work and actual minor subdivision. So there would be a lot created, detached, if you will, from the library's current 10 acres that would be deeded, put claim to the city of Monticello. One thing that I had, attorney and I discussed, is putting provision in this where if over on Park, if the ground breaking, if nothing has occurred in five years, that the property would be deeded back to the library. I spoke to a representative from the library and she thought, she agreed with that to have it deeded back to the library. I don't think if the fundraising does not come to fruition, will this deed the property back to the library and go a different direction? Are there any questions on what I presented tonight? Concerns?
I think five years sounds reasonable. You may, just to cover us, you know, are we making progress? So, you know, maybe at some point we're not there in five years, but we can, you'd have some time when we can revisit that and say, okay, we've made zero progress, in which case that would make sense that it goes back to them. But if we feel like mutually between the library board and us that we are making progress, even though five years down the road, we don't see anything, maybe there's a way to do that.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Noel. And if we're close in five years, but not quite there, maybe, you know, draft an agreement, we'll extend it for two years.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else?
The city would be responsible for paying to deed it back to cover the lost law holocaust.
Yeah, I think that's the direction that the council was with the, with the gift not to burden the library with any faults.
And then can you remind me, did the preliminary plans that we saw, did it include, like presuming that we had this property, that's where the pond?
Yeah.
I'm just, my mind kind of.
Yeah, the plan, the conceptual plans right now show part of that property being part of over on Park, both the west side of that property and that south side.
Anyone else? Thank you. So I'll present, and it is, of course, see it the way you had intended, I guess. Other persons' reports. Wendell?
Uh, probably doesn't, I don't have any complaints, let's put it that way. Do we have any, Terry, do we have any projection to, anytime in the near future to help with the situation with the parking lines and boundaries in the downtown area? I know, I'm not talking about something that's permanent, you know, but is there any way we can get some kind of white paint that would last a year or two and clean those lines up with somebody, you know, in the city taking a four-inch roller and marking some of them? They're in terrible shape. And I, we had had a jury trial here recently. People come, you know, we had 60-some jurors in and they're all, because we try and tell them to park in the city, park here, you know, but they're all saying, you can't tell where to park, you know, there's no, there's no lines, I don't know where, you know, where anything's at, so.
On our parking lots?
No, around the square, that area. And I know the asphalt's in bad shape and we intend to do something with that down the road, but could we do anything at all to improve the markings somewhat?
I believe we have paved the marking of that area in this year's budget. I don't, last year, we were trying to get it done and it was like teeth to get somebody to return phone call. We've, and Jim can attest to this, we reached out to Marston Striping for probably two years, if not a little bit longer since 2019. And Marston Striping is like the striping company.
They're premier business.
Um, we couldn't get it returned. Email, phone call, anything. But I know we had one of our employees after crosswalks on County Farm Road. He's got years of experience, one of the tour hires. So at the bare minimum, we'll do something, I don't want to use the word temporary, but
Yeah, because I know it can't really be long-term because of the condition of the asphalt. We're going to have to fix the street one of these days, so I don't want to, I don't want to spend thousands on the paint that we're going to cover it up anyway. But if we could improve it a little, it would help a lot, so. And that's all I have.
The park bits are great. The boxes the high school made are awesome and they don't take away from the other pretty ones I get to walk by down the road, so.
You have anything tonight?
I attended a conference last week in Texas and was intrigued by one of the speakers. His name was Andrew Davis and he has a book that I would encourage people, city staff maybe, to read and council's called Town Inc. And he has, it's about several towns our size that have, you know, kind of staked their claim in terms of growth or industry or whatever. You know, he has a philosophy that they've done research that say if you take a town this size and have another one that's very similar, if you stake a claim saying we are the blank capital of the blank, is more business. There's more people that want to go there. There's one of people that want to live there. So I think it's, it's good, you know, we, we have a great resource in Callie on staff and Shelley and those, I mean, we really have good people, but, you know, as we're, seems like in the downtown business, you know, we have one or two that open up and then one that leave and we're, we're still treading above water, but, you know, this, I think it's worth a read just to, you know, maybe create, if there's a vision out there that we can say, you know, we can build around that will separate us from other towns our size. I mean, we, we internally know how great Monticello is and the people that live here. There's certain reasons and we did a, we did a marketing plan, did a focus groups and things like that. But anyway, this was, I started on it and I would encourage staff just to read it to hopefully be inspired by something that we could do here that could be great.
And you can borrow it from the library app.
Yes, that's correct. Yep. I got this one used for six bucks. You're right. There you go.
Who's the author, Ron?
The author is Andrew Davis. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Pam?
I just want to thank the guys that worked out at the city cleanup thing. I spent many hours on there in line. But no, it was, I'm always impressed by how professional they are and helpful and so, and what, what a generous gift that is that the city, you know, gives our residents. So for the most part, it's awesome. All I have, so.
Before I forget, Tom, do you have anything? Wait, Tom? Ashley, do you have anything this evening?
I do, actually, yes. I would just wanted to put a reminder out there to everybody to get your tickets, the M A E F Golden Gala, 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 whatever sounds fanciest to you, I suppose. In honor of 24 years of service to the Monticello community. And it will be this Friday, the 13th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at the Monticello Community Building. And if you can get tickets, they're online. I don't, if you go to Monticello Area Education Foundation's Facebook page, there's a link. It's a BitPal link. I just don't know offhand exactly what it is. But there will be food, drinks, 360 photo booths. I don't really know what that is exactly, but it sounds exciting. Live and silent auction. We have some very nice sponsors this year, including Mayor Stoner and Chief Carter graciously donated their time to, for auction for students to become mayor for the day or police chief for the day.
Okay.
Yeah, and even, even more exciting too is that it will also be murder mystery event on Friday, so. And that's being put on by the Champagne Urbana Theater Company. So it'll be like, they'll be walking around and interacting with guests and giving you clues and all kinds of fun stuff. So please be sure to come out and support. It is their main fundraiser. It is their main fundraiser, they fund all of the projects for the school for the whole year, so it's good cause.
Thank you. Chief Carter?
Yes. The drug takeback was the thirtieth, we collected seventy-seven pounds of medications that we placed at the D E A. Our new hire, our new attorney, started yesterday on Mother's Day, and our calls, volume, we're at over a thousand calls throughout the year, so.
That's all? I figured you'd have all kinds of ones.
Well, it's like post-releven, so that's over a thousand.
That's awesome.
That's a lot.
I'd like to ask what the D E A, what do they do with all seventy-seven pounds?
Put all the boxes into the bag at the truck. I just know that we're not the first officer when they got here. There was not a lot of room left in that truck, and it was stuffed with boxes. They ship out the boxes and you have to pack them in so that they can stack just right in the truck.
Oh, my goodness.
But it was Florida Sealy, and it was almost back in.
Reduce, reuse, recycle.
Mr. Summers, do you have a report this evening?
Just real quick with your announcements, what was tonight? I'd like to publicly thank, and I'm sure we'll do something, Harold Day spent a lot of time on that, so I appreciate, as well as some other city staff, appreciate all of his time and energy and efforts towards, there are some hot topics on there occasionally. He always did a pretty good job, so. That's all I have.
At this time, I'm going to, council's going to go into closed session to discuss real estate purchase or lease by CS one twenty slash two C five. When we are through, we'll come out of closed session and come back into open session, we will adjourn, there will be no votes taken after, after the closed session, so except to get out of here, okay? Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Oh, I could have done it.
It is blue, white, whatever.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. I'm going to get closed. See you in two weeks. Thank you.